This conference will now be recorded.
That usually stops the chatter, doesn't it?
Okay, I have seven o'clock. Like to call the July 1st DeSoto City Council meeting to order, order, start the roll call, please.
Lane?
Here.
Daniels? Tom Michael?
Here.
Ritter?
Here.
Murdoch?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, it appears that Councilman Daniels is absent.
Okay. I would now invite you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business is not listed on our agenda, but it's going to be, we have a special guest here tonight. Ian McPherson was, served on our planning commission for eight years from 2013 to 2021, but when our city clerk retired, Ian decided to retire as well, so. We have a plaque to present to Ian to thank him for his years of service, and then I'll offer him the mic if he wants to say anything. I'm not sure. Ian, you don't mind the picture, do you?
No.
He strikes the camera.
Well, Ian, on behalf of the city, we'd like to thank you for your eight years of service. We appreciate your hard work on the planning commission for all those years. Thank you very much.
My welcome.
Thank you.
Like this way, one, two, three.
Thanks.
It was real, it was fun. I'm not going to finish that. But it was enjoyable.
All right, well, thank you very much.
My welcome.
No, thanks for showing up tonight. Ian was, we're going to do this at his last planning commission meeting, but unfortunately, he called in sick for a black. Couldn't be helped.
Bye, good night, thank you. Good night.
Might be the first council meeting Lannan's ever left early. She's fucking like she didn't even owe us anything.
All right, now our consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes from our council meeting of June 17th. I know five, approval of ordinance number 2512 amending the city code by for changing the law regarding to the sale of alcohol, liquor, and cereal malt beverages. Anyone have any discussion of any items on the consent agenda or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We might note for the record, Councilman Ritter wants to recuse himself from the consent agenda because of pay ordinance. Councilman Ritter?
No, I did not see that. Is there a B?
Yes, there is.
Huh, yeah, let's do that. I'll walk out. Will it be enough to vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be back in a little bit.
His is on the second.
This is the second part. We have a split.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry.
So Kevin, so.
Yeah, you'll need to recuse from the 1.5. My, my, my fault.
All right, then I'll second Lori's motion.
Very good. Now we know he's back. Any discussion, further discussion of the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Tom Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
New problem, yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Motion, Mr. Mayor, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to item 1.5, consider pay orders number 905. Now, A, Kevin, are you going to recuse yourself on this item?
Yes, I'll walk for a little bit.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve pay ordinance 905A.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Tom Michael?
Yes.
Ritter? Murdoch?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes.
Okay. Kevin, are you back?
You guys done?
We're done.
All right.
All right, we will move on now to call to public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on. Comments discussed under call to public may or not, may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight under call to public?
Go ahead.
Step to the podium mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Andy Bound, and I live at 17204 Melrose Street in Overland Park, but I'm here tonight representing Johnson County Community College. I, mayor, members of council, it's my privilege to be with you tonight and give you an update on your community college. And I want to first of all, say to all of you and to the taxpayers of Johnson County, thank you very much for your support of the community college, for your tax dollars. I began serving actually a year ago today as president and thought this would be a good way, now that we're through at least the bulk of the urgency of the pandemic, that this would be a good time for me to come out, introduce myself, and to provide a quick update to you on the college. Perhaps the best way to do this is to talk specifically about the residents of DeSoto and those who take advantage of the college or utilize the college. While each year we'll serve some 45,000 students in credit and continuing ed programs specifically to DeSoto, what we look at, those who are degree seeking, taking credit courses, we'll serve each year approximately 215 students. Of those, 70 of those are high school students, most often taking concurrent enrollment. So they're high school students taking high school courses or taking college courses in their high school years. And each year, more than 20 students will earn a, an associate degree or certificate. In addition, through our continuing education programs, an additional 60 residents will be served, and of those, some 19 or 20 each year will earn one form of a certificate or another. This past year, because of the pandemic, and in our effort to keep our students, faculty, staff, and community safe, most of our courses were taught online, in one form of online, and approximately 20% of our courses were taught face to face. As we approach the fall semester, though, that will jump to more than 50% of our courses being taught face to face, that we move back to a, a much more traditional approach during the normal school year. As of June 1st, the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art opened back up to the public, and this fall will have a full slate of performances at the Midwest Trust Center. Summer camps are back in full swing. It's great from my perspective to see many more people back on campus than perhaps what I've seen during the bulk of the school year. Tuition continues to be $94 a credit hour for residents of Johnson County and for others within the state of Kansas, but not in Johnson County, tuition's $112, making Johnson County Community College the most affordable higher education option in the state of Kansas. For those who may have thought college was out of reach, we have just, through the state, just are launching the Kansas College Promise Scholarship, which is for recent high school graduates and adults 21 and older who've lived in the state for at least three years to pursue high demand, high wage, high value programs in IT and security, physical and mental health, advanced manufacturing and building trades, early childhood education, and education and training. And so while this has been a challenging year, we certainly have risen to the occasion as have you, and I appreciate your leadership and support of the college. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've appreciated the college as well. JCC has been a member of our chamber and for I don't know how many years, but we, so many I forget, but we have appreciated Carol Blayman's participation and her leadership in our chamber and our EDC, so thank you for sharing her with us.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
CJ Garrett, I'm owner of Heartland Development Company. Most of you guys probably recognize me, but for those of you who don't, we, we are just finishing up the Cherokee Woods project here in town. We actually just sold our last lots there about two weeks ago. Now we've moved on to the Arcadian Estates project, which is why I'm here today. So I was discussing with Brad earlier this week, we had an incident just with the rain and some erosion issues out there on Waverly and on 95th Street. So talking with him, it sounded like that was going to be a topic for today's meeting, so I just wanted to personally come out. If anybody had any questions or concerns or anything of that nature, I wanted to be the one to handle them versus it going through staff and staff going through. So just want to let everybody know, I'm a resident, I live here, part of the community, I'm always available, not hard to find. Anybody has any questions or anything I can do?
Could you give us your address, please?
34557 West 84th Terrace. Yeah.
Mike, would you like me to share some of the stuff I shared with you earlier, or you want to?
Sure, Kevin, yeah.
So I'm Councilman Ritter. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight. A couple of the questions I shared with Mike tonight was, one was the, the first culvert that you, you folks set, you pushed the soil back up, but there isn't any, any swift protection, so all that soil looks like it's going to go down into that drain. And so, so that was one of my concerns that I asked Mike to ask you to take care of, if you could, please. And then there was.
Go ahead.
And then on Waverly, they are off the road, they're probably in the right of way, but they are off the roadway. We, it's very dark road. We have a lot of walkers, but there are several open holes that are just off the, off the roadway, and I asked Mike if it was possible to fence those holes at nighttime so folks couldn't walk off into them. But that was the only concerns that I had.
So and Brad, Brad sent pictures of those to me earlier in the week, and I discussed it with our contractor, Ryan Weers out there, and the southernmost hole, he acknowledged that, except the damage on that. They got a track loader up on, on the asphalt, and they were setting gravel for that box. That northern hole is actually just settling beside the asphalt itself. Either way, we've got plenty of dirt around there, we can fill it and tamp it all down. With Brad and I also discussed, you know, there needs to be better erosion protection right there on Waverly. There's rock check dams and stuff, they're all part of the plan that we've talked with Weers, and they're going to get those installed just as soon as we have access back to the site. Unfortunately, on this is, you know, we were really excited to get started on this deal, and I think we've had eight working days since we've, since we've started out there. So it's been a little, little limited, and it hasn't been forgiving for us, especially when you're trying to move dirt, but we understand the concern of all the neighbors, and obviously, we don't want to be a pest, but you know, it is a work site, we're going to do everything.
No, no, and I thank you, thank you for taking the consideration in that, and I don't think that Brad had these pictures that I sent tonight. You know, they, these are like four by 10 holes, probably three, four feet deep maybe, or, or more, and, and look like they should probably have some winds fencing around them, so. Just, just common things, but no, I'm happy with what you guys have been doing, so, so thank you for showing up.
Yeah, Mike, you have this, right?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I'll send it to you. I couldn't, couldn't really, it looked like maybe some excavations, preparation for a culvert going in or something. They look like purpose excavations. They were, they were full of water.
Are they, are they in the ditch themselves? Are they up to the west on the site?
I really don't know on the site where they are, maybe.
One of them is on the ridge. At the south end. And it looks like you guys just put a culvert in there, and so. It's full of water. And then the other one was, it looked like you guys might have been looking for maybe the, the inner internet line that might have ran through there and just didn't get it filled back up maybe or something, but it's just an empty hole. But Mike, Mike has the pictures. I'd be, I'd be happy to forward them to you if you like.
Okay, or I'll tell you what, if you want to, if you want to send them to me, or if you want to meet out there, I'd be happy to be. Unfortunately, when I was out there the other day, the ditch was moving with water, and any hole would have just looked like a puddle. You would have known if it was three feet deep or three inches deep, they'd have stepped in it. But yeah, I know they were potholed out there because the data lines on, on Waverly, they were questioning the depths on those, and Zoom was out there, they were having to repair some stuff, so yeah, I, I don't doubt it. I'm not disagreeing with you, I just need to go look.
No, I appreciate you showing up and, and taking the time and, and, and moving forward with that project, so thank you.
Just work with staff to ensure that we have appropriate protections if we have open excavations and that your erosion control measures as so you can get the soil stabilized and when the rain stops, which now it probably won't rain for.
We'll take the heat, we'll take the ground at this point.
All right, well, thank you for coming in.
Kind of make a quick comment also, observation from what I see happening, and I think the one hole that the Councilman Ritter is referring to is a, a pit that was dug for a future inlet, because it's by where the permanent drive, uh, drive entrance will be, I believe.
Got it.
So that might be it, but what appears to me to, to be happening, and you know, you guys can take a look yourself, but I see it when it's actually raining, is where, where you've cut through the berm for the temporary dry, that is now allowing all of the water from, you know, all of that land plus the upstream land to discharge directly onto Waverly now. Whereas before, that berm carried it all the way down to the corner where it entered the culvert under 95th and went across. So, you know, when it rains hard, it, it comes, it is flowing out of there and onto the road before it gets back into the ditch. But I think we're, you're going to have to find a way to deflect it away from the temporary driveway.
Yeah.
By putting, probably by putting that berm back and making it something you can go over. Otherwise, it's going to, you know, I made a comment to Mike, you almost need to do a drainage study of it now with that cut through the berm there, because that's where the, the opening is occurring, it's letting all the water off onto the road.
Well, there's storm pipes going up the entry there, so I mean, the way that it's designed, it'll shut.
I know, I know it'll be designed correctly. I know it's designed correctly, it's just this temporary, you know, construction phase.
Yeah.
Situation and that, that's causing it to behave that way.
And the five inches of rain we got in the last two days. So we don't have that, we're, we're, we're a lot better shape.
It has been a reoccurring problem, though. I mean, granted, this rain was exceptional, but it's been a reoccurring problem.
Well, I think this is the second time, I think both times were four inches of rain, three, 25 days over the past 40 years, and 23 of them, we didn't have a problem, but this, these big rains, yeah, I understand. Because when I went out there and looked, it was, it was eroded coming out that construction. So the guys, Weers know, they need to put more gravel down, they need to get the rock check, check dams up, a lot of that's still, but that top box, the set right there, they'll catch that once it's tied in.
Once it's tied in, but until it's tied in, it's going to, even, even though you, you put the erosion control in place, you're still going to have the water discharged out of the river.
Okay.
Well, thank you CJ.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else under call to public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item 3, A, old business, consider rezoning a property at 30665 West 95th Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was on the agenda last week or last meeting. It was tabled due to a incorrect legal description, and we're now bringing it forward for your consideration tonight. Application is by Mark Gully. He's actually purchasing a property adjacent to his residence on 95th Street. He has indicated as a form of any plan, just think about splitting, keeping the backtrack to itself, and then splitting it and, and perhaps developing a front piece, and selling that piece off and building a home on it for sale. As far as going through our criteria, we did hold a public meeting at the planning commission, didn't get any comments and any applicants. I did receive one email from one of the residents, strictly to the south, just curious why they're doing any zoning in the area. As you know, when somebody annexes property in, comes in with county zoning, and then we have to zonate to a DeSoto category, so it was zoned rural agriculture, it's being considered for rezoning for a rural suburban, which is consistent with the area when I explained that to Alvin, the individual. I'd say it would be okay, but they just were just wondering why there's some activity in this area. Also, interest, this area is 95th Waverly, this is sort of the island, it's actually counting that corner, the southeast corner, it's all county, surrounded by DeSoto, so it has these pieces of, and there's two additional tracks that are for sale. Also, request renovation as well, so hopefully we'll get this area entirely within, see, DeSoto within a short time as far as with all the sales come through. Just going through the basic criteria, and the planning commission did find a positive in recommending rezoning from RUR to RO to the city council. Just going through a few of the items on here. So proposed zoning is consistent with surrounding zoning. There was a single, there is a single family resident on this track, is no longer occupied, and Mark has indicated he was going to tear it down, and that's where he's considering splitting that track off and selling it, but right now it is vacant. As far as utilities, there'll be no city utilities out there on their streets in store. It is in rural Water Sevens District. Part of energy, and it won't, it'll be on a private septic system, so the city won't have any utilities that we have to serve this area with these streets in store. As far as the, is impacts on the environment or any impacts on the community, said there was a resident out there, so there will be really no change from that use. It's just basically going in the city, it's now being zoned a rural suburban, which is consistent with the area. So we don't see any detrimental effect on it here by our properties, and also staff, and I recommend the planning commission that you know adjacent or no reason for any adjacent properties going in, any hindrance or detriment to their property or allowing this building application to be approved. So with that, as I said, the planning commission did recommend the city council rezoning this property to rural suburban.
All right, questions for Brad regarding the rezoning?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of 30665 West 95th Street from rural ag RUR to RO residential suburban.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we, is this an ordinance, do we need an ordinance?
It's a 2513.
Oh, it's already on there. Gotcha, okay. All right, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Tom Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes.
Wait, you need to ask me.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry. Yes. Yes. All right. New business. Item A, approve approvals related to general obligation bonds for capital improvement projects and refinancing of existing debt.
Right? Yes, Council, I'll introduce briefly, Kevin Wimpy with the city's bond council on this item is here to explain, answer all of your technical questions. But this issue was a, is a very successful bond offering. We had four bids on our, on our bonds, which turned, you know, the, the low bidder was Commerce Bank, who has actually carried our, our last several issues of bonds, very favorable interest rate. I said, did send out the summary memo to you this afternoon via email, and I, I failed to upload that. But, so what happened today was Kevin took the results of the bond, filled in the blanks for the resolution and for the ordinance that was included in the packet. And so I included the, the full versions as a hard copy at your places, and I also uploaded that to the Google Drive this, this morning. In essence, our initial cost analysis on this, Jeff White performed. We were expecting about $800,000 in savings over, over the 20-year life of the bond. The result was so favorable today, that looks like it's going to be more than a million dollars savings for the refinancing part. So remember, there, there's $2.1 million in new debt for capital improvements, most of that going to the Ottawa Street project, some also to the roundabout and, and pedestrian crossing improvements. But most of this bond was refinancing of existing debt, and that's where we'll, we'll realize about a million dollars in savings. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin with Mayor's approval.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore Bell. Nice to see everyone again. Yeah, so you recall the council meeting last month, we were asking for your blessing to go to market and pick bids, and also authorize these projects for a few of bond things. As Mike described, bids were taken this morning, and the, the typical process here in, for Kansas bonds is the competitive sale occurs in the morning, and the specs and numbers get filled in during the day for your approval tonight. So, you know, with those documents completed and your approval tonight, we've worked with city staff, the underwriter and so forth to finalize documents, including the official statement or the offering document used by investors for disclosure purposes. We finalize the bond transcript and send it to the attorney general's office for their approval, required under state law, and push forward with the closing date of your life, etc. See your proceeds. So again, just the ordinance and resolution for your approval tonight, and we will be authorized to proceed. Happy to stand for your question.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Wimpy?
I should also mention Jim, Jim Pritchard here from Columbia Capital, in case you have any questions for the season.
Okay. I'm not seeing any questions. I think we're smart enough to accept the million dollars in savings, so.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2514 authorizing, providing for the issuance of general obligation improvement refunding bond series 21 of the city of DeSoto. Do you need to read that whole thing?
No, I think that's sufficient for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Tom Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
I will also make a motion, we approve resolution number 50 prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation improvement and refund authorized by the ordinance 514 of the issuer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Tom Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Do you need to pick up papers tonight, or is there, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be a PDF now.
Gosh. All right.
Thanks for your help, man.
Thank you. All right, item B. Consider contract services for emergency management and special projects.
Yes, Council, we knew what we were losing when Steve retired. It, you know, the least of which is emergency management, primary contact for the but as we, as we looked at the capacities and duties of, of the staff that was here, the default position, it went to Cameron because Cameron went into the department head position in the building officials office, and Cameron is more than capable of doing that work, but his workload is such that I feared that this emergency management component would, would be lacking. We don't quite have the capacity or the background and knowledge of how our emergency plan operates and the knowledge of the people who are involved. So I reached out to see, to Steve to see if he would be willing to play that role for us on a, on a contractual basis. for us on a, on a contractual basis. And he was open and receptive to that. In addition to that, there's the special projects, kind of the one-off, the smaller stuff, but stuff that really needs some general manager type of administration to get them going and keep them going through, through completion. So as we drafted the employment agreement, I decided to include in the scope some of those special projects. And I listed a few of those in, in the staff report. You know, in the past, Steve's ramrodded the bathrooms down at Riverfest Park, and a lot of those improvements behind the street apartment building with the, with the improvements that we've made there over the last couple of years. And we have some more of those upcoming, the most, the biggest one being the generator project out back here, that, that Steve just loves to do, is very good at, and I think would provide a terrific service at a, at a very reasonable cost for us. So I'm asking for your approval to enter into the contract agreement with Steve for the emergency management liaison position in special projects. And Steve is here to answer any questions that you might have about that.
Any questions from council?
I haven't done the background check.
He didn't stay retired long, did he?
He's that way. He needs to have something to keep him busy. His wife called me just begging.
Probably.
Take a few hours.
Mike, how much, how many, how many hours do you expect a year?
Yeah, we talked about, probably in the range of 10 to 20 hours a month. You know, there are, there's a monthly meeting with the emergency management folks, and just some of the emergency manage, probably the emergency management stuff would be up to about 10 hours a month, and the special project might be up to another 10. That's kind of in the ballpark, what I expect.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion. We authorize the mayor to sign an contractor agreement with Steven Chek Senior.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I wanted to ask you, did anything change on, I know you did the last siren pole on the batteries and the antennas and the new, has anything changed on that, since you're going to be putting in another one, I assume?
We'll talk about that soon.
Okay.
It's the next agenda.
All right.
Yeah.
Hey, all right. I just have one question. Will Steve be providing some, some training for, for us and the employees, the new employees and things like that, too?
Yeah, you know, one of the other things that we talked about was some involvement in safety training, some of the safety training courses, you know, that through NPR, we're required to have monthly safety meetings. And some of those definitely would be emergency management type things. So we've talked about it in that format. Is that, is that what you're kind of getting at, Kevin, more specifically?
I think I can barely hear Steve, but like the one 700, you know, those, those sort of things, making sure that our new employees are up to date so that we meet, meet the standards.
Yeah, the NIMS training stuff you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd intended for him to kind of take over that, that process, too. Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Right?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Adam Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes.
Okay. Item C, consider proposal for siren pole replacement.
Yeah, well, council, I think I might turn this over to our hot shot new consultant.
Welcome back.
Mayor and council, it's nice to be here again. Cameron did me a favor, and when they found this pole had a problem, we had a problem with this siren out at Old Country, if you remember, two or three years ago. We had to replace the electronics on that unit because it had ants in it. So now we find that the poles deteriorated to the point where it's a serious issue where the pole's going to fracture. Cameron took bids. As you remember, Blue Valley Public Safety is the only contractor that John County allowed to work on these siren systems, and we've worked with them for years now, have a maintenance agreement with them. We looked at the option of having Yadora Utilities. Eldon has been really good to us in the past. He put the two siren poles in for the last two sirens that I installed. Looking, it seemed we could do a cost saving with Yadora putting them in. It was about $240, but the, the recommendation is to go ahead and let Blue Valley Public Safety do the whole project, where they coordinated with Evergy and Utility Locates, and they're going to take the pole out, put the new one in. It just makes sense to do it. So we're asking tonight for the approval of $6,250 to make this change. They are expecting between one to three weeks to accomplish that.
Okay. Questions? Danny, what was your question earlier?
Oh, I was wondering if any of the equipment had changed, you know, the specs or anything, and does that, was this did include all of that new equipment for that pole or?
Well, the, the equipment that's on the pole is our current standard. As you, you may really recollect, we spent quite a bit of money several years ago to upgrade all of these sirens to the current situation where you can actually monitor them, and I'll be having that changed back over to me to where the siren goes down and sends you an automatic email in the early. Blue Valley is the one, of course, we can't. They're under contract. All of the sites are under contract. They found this pole during their annual maintenance contract service on that pole. So it's paying off to have that contract. And within the next year, I think it's next year, they've got to replace the batteries and all of it. And that's part of the contract. It's all prepaid. Now, as we expand, and we're looking at doing some, you know, annexations outside of the current area, we're going to have to look at, at future siren coverage. That's something that we've got to keep an eye on. We've already got an issue west of us, which the county normally, when they put parts in, put a siren in, and they didn't do it on like citizen parks, so there, there is no coverage west. It's, it's not in the city, so it isn't, at this point, really your obligation, but the county should have and didn't.
Well, then, is the county still also doing the, I haven't talked to them in a while, but I know that when they did the tests of the systems, they, we actually had people out at each place, each siren pole.
I do that.
Make sure that.
I did that in the past, and I will continue to do that now. Typically, what I would do is monitor one each month, and then I have people who will watch them for me.
And then you will also get a readout on your phone if something does go wrong?
Oh, yeah. I have, and that's 24/7.
Okay. Thank you.
So Steve, that closest siren to that, that Lexington Lake, is that the one that's by Lexington Trails?
Well.
Is there one further north than that?
The closest siren there would be the one out at Clearview.
Okay. Clearview City, the one you replaced?
With, right, the new siren that I put on the corner of Sunfire and, and Lexington.
Yeah, it's got plenty of range. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we need to include these options, the 1250, 750, for any reason, in the, in the approval?
No, there won't be any permits on that.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion. We authorized the mayor to sign a proposal from Blue Valley Public Safety in amount of $6,250.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Adam Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, welcome back.
Welcome back.
All right.
I'm going to ask him.
Consider final plat for Anderson Hill. Brad, are you going to introduce this item?
I certainly will, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a final plat for Anderson's Hill, it's on the corner of Shawnee and 82nd Street. This is the only track in the city that's zoned R2A, and which is basically a hybrid of two flexible family. What they have proposed, and actually, site plan, the planning commission at last meeting, which was approved, and so as you know, the final plat's been given to the city council for final approvals, so. Site plan has been approved, went through the process of high level unit sidewalks, as you know, came up. Landscaping, you know, all the difficult things that we look at, harsh parking on-site, parking versus street parking. Actually, I think it'll be a really nice improvement, the elevations and architectural details that provided in the site plan, which were quite, quite nice. Be upgraded to this area. It's been vacant for quite some time, because I understand that there were three houses on the track. There's four tracks there now, three houses. Combine them into, combine them into three tracks, and is actually now a, as I plan, I think he's going to also talk about some industrial revenue bonds, but that's still a little bit up in the air at this point. Anyway, at this point, it's kind of more technical review, but the final condition, we do have the delayed improvements clause, which will require it's probably the property to go sidewalk, it would really be five years.
So which side, so, so we're building sidewalk along the 82nd Street side, so they'll have to re-instruct a new sidewalk along the Y and Dots.
Yes.
Shawnee, Shawnee, I'm sorry, Shawnee, yeah, no one.
And actually, the driveways, I pick up quite a bit of the area.
This is the site plan that was approved by the planning commission.
Made some interesting discussions about some of the old oak trees on site.
Okay. Any other questions for Brad?
From council. So on the delayed improvement clause, and it just hit me, so I haven't had a chance to rethink it, but where's the, where do we get into trouble over who actually has to build the sidewalk later down the road if the developer isn't the property owner?
I guess that's heard Patrick on that.
So how, how, how did we say we're going to fix that from going the way it did in Old Country 8?
Because it's on this plat that will be recorded. So anyone that buys those lots, when title passes from the current owner, they'll be on the hook for this.
And so what, what wasn't there that caused the, the stumble before?
On the plat.
It was just a site agreement?
It was, it was a site agreement that didn't, it got filed in connection with the original parent property, but didn't get filed against each lot when that property was platted. That was the gap.
That was the gap. And that's why I'm wondering, to, you know, I remembered it had to do with once the lot chain ends, then, but in this case, it will be recorded with the lot.
It'll be, it's on the plat.
It's on the plat.
So it should have a time report.
Yeah.
Should be picked up.
Okay. In Old Country, we could have, you know, if upon plating, we filed that development agreement with each one of those lots, but that, that never happened. That was the gap.
Okay.
I guess I would add also, we've had that delayed improvements laws now on Clyde Glass. So it's, it's standard now, and every block, it's on there.
Any other questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the final plat for Henderson, Anderson Hill.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Adam Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Item D, consider temporary use permit for DeSoto Half Marathon.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Derek Tate is organizing a, actually, I was going to get it, it's a biannual event. Actually, 2019, we had the first one, but we had to skip last year because of COVID, but I think we'll be annually coming back with this. Two and a half marathon and 5K, that will begin and finish at DeSoto High School. I actually noticed on the staff report that the best they set up for 26, that's actually the move to October 3rd, because we had the MS 150, that was pretty good, previous council meetings, 23 and 26, they supposedly could have taxed the sheriff's department and seen if they could really handle that. 200 cyclists and a couple hundred runners, and see if we could keep them all safe, lighting, which I liked, they did, the racing plans, I guess, a few days ago, so we want to afford something like that, so I asked Derek if he would just simply do a complete one week later, so he's agreed to that. And they're now going to have the 5K and a half marathon on October 5th. It's the same route that was proposed two years ago, same conditions. He's worked with the school district, got approval for using the high school parking lot. Will be contacting the public safety, sheriff's department, and the Northwest Solidarity Fire Department, out, and the municipal safety, and all those types of things. Are you volunteers for ways to clean up? There will be a DJ, there will be playing some music during the morning. It starts at eight o'clock in the night, and then it'll probably be over by noon, so we can talk to them. Yeah. So with that, as you know, anything that uses public streets requires council approval, and the submitted papers, application fee. I don't stand for any questions, and I'm so curious, it would be obvious if I had any questions for you.
Questions for Brad or Mr. Tate?
How many runners did you have in your first one? Wow, that's good. Open for 200? That's good. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion, then we approve the temporary use permit for October 3rd for the DeSoto Half Marathon and 5K.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Adam Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
The mayor's motion passes.
Thank you. Item, thank you, Brad. Item F, and thank you, Mr. Tate, for bringing your project forward again this year. Looking forward to it. Item F, consider sewer force main replacement pro.
Yes, council, we, we haven't talked about how we might spend Recovery Act dollars, but how would you like to spend some? We have, the force main, this sewer force main carries, almost without exception, every drop of sewer that, that gets flushed into Soto eventually goes through this force main between the main water station, which is now in the area, on its way out to the treatment plant location on 79th Street. Over the past 18 months, we've had three pretty major breaks on this force main, and those are not fun or easy to repair. We can't leave the, the pump station off for really very long at all before we need to pump the, the flow, get it going. So they wind up being very unpleasant repairs to make. After our third one, we, well, actually with the first one, when we cut into that pipe, we, we knew right away that it was corroding pretty badly. It's a ductile iron pipe, and it, it was corroding pretty badly from the inside. This, this section of that force main, it's along 82nd Street between Shawnee and Ottawa, is the highest point on that main. And so because it's the highest point, gases tend to migrate to it, and hydrogen sulfide will eat, eat away at the inside of the pipe like this. Doug suspects, when we first started that, the pump station up in 2007, we really had a hard time dialing in the chemical adders that are required to keep hydrogen sulfide from forming in the force main and actually out of the treatment plant works. He went through a period of, of probably a couple of years trying to get that right. He finally did, but he thinks that most of this corrosion probably happened during that first couple of years of the main. So at any rate, we got Blue Water Solutions Group, who was the engineering firm who helped us do the condition analysis on our raw water mains a couple of years ago. They did some thickness, wall thickness testing on that. If within that block, and with Within that block and with several blocks, and they provided the memo that I, that report. In summary, it looks like there's a couple of blocks between Ottawa Street and Shawnee Street. The thickness of that walls is, is, is too thin to, to just deal with. It's clear that another break is imminent and we need to move pretty quickly on this. So what I'm asking for tonight is your approval to move forward with the fix. And the fix is pretty simple, we're just going to tear out what's there and replace it. We'll actually be replacing the new one, probably just adjacent to the old one, so we can move it active while, while we're building. Blue Water had a, just a ballpark estimate of about $150,000 to do that, to do the replacement. I think it's going to be less than $100,000, but we'll just, we'll, we'll just wait, have to wait and see. The first step is to get a design and specifications enough to go out and get bids for that project. So what I ask for your authorization to do is negotiate a scope and fee with Blue Water to provide those plans and specs and get them out, get them out to bid just as soon as possible. I expect that will be less than $15,000 for that design. So I'd ask for your approved authorization to proceed with them up to $15,000.
Okay.
So that's it, and again, as I mentioned, you know, there's nothing necessarily in the budget for this. We could use it from funds on hand, just in the general fund, we do have the fund balance to cover it, but this would also be a really good use of the recovery act funds as well. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Mike?
At, at this time, all we're approving is the budget for the Blue Water Solutions contract, not for a budget for the, the target replacement, correct?
Yeah, we'll bring back bids.
We'll bring, it'll be actual bids that will go out. Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Blue Water Solutions Group in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for force main design, force main replacement design.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call please.
Lane.
Yes.
Hutter.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for our regular agenda items. We have no executive session, so we'll go to. Mike, what do you?
Yes, council, just a couple of things. I'll be out of the office next week, so actually tomorrow and, and all of next week. We'll have some access to phone and, and email, but I'll try not to use it, so. I think we'll be in good hands with department heads and Patrick around and, you know, if there's any serious personnel decisions to be made, the mayor does still have some superintendent control for the city code, so. Just an FYI on that, keep the department heads to behave themselves while I'm gone.
And so they better shape up.
Lori's next in charge.
You're next in line, yeah, yeah, right. Um, I did want, you know, we had just a tremendous amount of rain yesterday morning. And I actually happened to be driving in from Alefa about 8:30 and we just, K10 was about 30 miles an hour, it really was raining hard. We did have some flooding because of that, and one of the areas that flooded was 95th and Lexington. That area has a history of flooding and we know, was it last year, two years ago? We did, actually COVID, during COVID.
It was COVID, yeah.
We did that major repair to that culvert just east of there, under the bridge. So while it was flooded, of course, you couldn't drive down there, but Ron Creason got on the front loader and, and took it down to see that culvert. He said it was just running raging full all the way through. And then after the water receded, he checked it again and the culvert's fine. You know, it's just, we didn't make it a whole lot bigger, but, so the, the area did flood. We think also the cul, there's culverts under 95th and also under Lexington in that area. And those, those were, were flooded as well. So the intersection was closed for several hours, I think by about 11 o'clock, it was low enough to open back up again. So we had that, the park flooded again too, we had kayakers in the park actually. But we did notice that this morning, the water was back down, you know, it, it had drained out. So if you remember, we're, we're almost done designing that park project, but the first phase was to clean out that line and figure out where it went. So did quite a bit of cleaning. It seemed to help out quite a bit. There's still a section of that line that will have to be replaced, it's sagged. And there's a partial collapse that we weren't able to get to, so that's probably the restriction. Just what we already did, made, made, made a little bit of an improvement. And then this building here took on some water in areas that were, hadn't really before. There's a spot down by the chamber office and the hallway out, out in, in front of the cafeteria, but Jay's, Jay's looking at those, so. All in all, I think we came through, and of course with the Arcadian issues, it's just a muddy mess out there, but we, we think we came through it okay. I hadn't heard of basement, people had basement flooding and, and things like that too, but no major emergency road type flooding aside from 95th and Lexington. That was an eventful day yesterday. And I don't have anything else, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Questions for Mike? All right, we'll move on to the attorney, Patrick?
I'm just wanting to update the council on 8225 Delaware. We, the contractor has indicated they were, you know, imminently available to do that. Just, they indicated this week that they were going to move a piece of equipment in, actually today, I don't believe they did that, but they've just been delayed with other work, but sounds like fairly quickly, they should have that house taken down.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Brad, anything for the group tonight?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Brandon?
Just one thing, just a quick update on the public art. The artist and I have been playing phone tag for the last week. We did get to speak yesterday, and so we are just waiting for things to dry out so we can start putting in that concrete pad. We'll get that set up here in the next week or so and then I'm work with the artist about getting it placed.
Okay.
We are, we'll have another update at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Council comments. Kevin Ritter, would you like to start?
I just have a couple of things, I would like to thank Mike Brungart for adding some selective enforcement with the sheriff's office on 95th. They were there again tonight, tons of cars, but they were moving a lot, a lot slower and a lot safer. So whatever contact you made there did work. And then, uh, thank you again for taking the call regarding out here, I appreciate everything.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Danny, anything for the group tonight?
Oh, just one thing, the mowing that was done along Cedar Creek, thank you for that, it was.
Yeah, that was with our new mower, by the way.
Oh, okay, I did not know, I, it looked, when I saw it and the neighbors called and they were appreciative of it because he took down the line of sight distancing for those corners were bad there. And some of the people pulling out was in, had no line of sight of oncoming traffic, so. It did help the traffic situation along there, and I saw the same thing they did, and it helped immensely, so thank the city for that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Lori, anything tonight?
No, nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Kevin Hahn and Michael?
Uh, no, everything I, it was on my mind, it's been addressed, so appreciate Mike and everything that, that you're doing.
Um, I have just one item I would like to bring up, something we've been having ongoing discussions with, but downtown, I had heard that, well, I've seen now, it looks like Mercado has moved out of the space downtown, so we've lost some potential sales tax revenue there, and I, and I understand that the, been told, I don't know for a fact, that the church has bought another property, so. I do appreciate the work that the church has done restoring the, the building on the corner, it looks fabulous, but I, I'm concerned that we get too many properties downtown that are non-revenue generating, that it's going to be hard to sustain kind of ongoing improvement effort downtown. We've got the church now, we have a, a city building, fire station, we have a post office, we have a school district building. So it's like, it seems like.
Library.
And the li, and the county library, so.
At least generates pedestrian activity.
But we have a lot of properties down there that generate, that don't generate any money that would go toward helping to fund, you know, an improvement or, or cover the, help to pay for the, the costs that it would take to improve downtown. Just something I want to think about, but I'm going to contact the church to find out what their plans are, because I, I mean, I would hope, I'm hoping that in some fashion, that we can maintain something more than a Sunday morning presence with those two buildings, because that's, you know, that's a big chunk of that block that, and I just hate to see that if it's only a sun, one day a week use. That it, I mean, again, since you're not going to generate the buzz, the vibe, the feel, the, the downtown traffic and that we would need to try and get something going that would make a investment downtown pay off, so. That's all I have tonight, I would say that I'm also going to be gone next week, so. The mayor's gone, the city administrator's gone, I guess that supervising authority rolls down to the council president in my absence, is that right?
So I said, everybody better be on good behavior, crap. Because I have eyes everywhere, so.
That's all I have in my mind.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause. All right, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.